Amendment number four, the staff's recommendation is do not allow production and processing facilities less than 1,000 feet from residential zones. Comments, questions? Commissioner Holland?
Question for staff. Alan, can you tell me what the difference between number four and number 10 are in our packet?
Yes.
So I have a clear understanding before...
Number four was 1,000-foot separation from residential zones. Number 10, when we get there, would be a separation between, of 1,000 feet, between production and processing facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Questions, comments? Do I hear a motion?
I do have one quick question. In regards to the gentleman's interest in the MS property, this 1,000-foot setback would preclude that use. Am I correct in that? Is that...
That is probably correct, yes.
Because of the houses up on the bluff?
Because it's less than 1,000 feet from residentially-zoned properties to the east. That's correct.
Any other comments, or are we ready for a motion?
Alan, what is the state law as it sits today?
State law does not consider residential zoning a sensitive land use from which a 1,000-foot buffer is required.
It's parks and schools and daycares.
Parks, schools.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And just as a comment, if I could, just by, you know, visiting, and I think most of us did, visiting the Tier One facility we did out in the county there, which is, I know it's on large lot, five-acre zoning there, their neighbors aren't very close or anything like that, but just talking with the individual that ran the facility, his neighbors had no idea he was even operating the facility. And I would think it would be the exact same thing, and if you do have a notification process, at least you can take things into consideration. So that's just my opinion on that.
And I guess I've got a question. I'm not as familiar with the site as some of you are. So the MS split property that we were talking about earlier, how far away is that from a residential zone?
I don't have an exact answer for you. I do know that it's just barely under 1,000 feet from the park that is up above, and so it probably would require some kind of a boundary line adjustment in order for the building in question on the MS zone property to have a new boundary that is at least 1,000 feet from that park, which is a sensitive land use under state law, no matter what we do with our own local laws. And so I don't have a distance between this building and the residential zoning, but it's less than 1,000 feet.
Is the residential zone, as you recollect, closer than the park to the site?
Yes.
Okay. Quite, by quite a bit? Okay. Just not that familiar. Okay.
Yeah, I think the closest parcel is the Soriano parcel, I believe, and then the park is adjacent to that, the overview. So one other quick question, if I could, Alan. It's escaped me now, but I'll come back to it. Sorry.
Any...
Oh, I know what it is. I'm sorry. So is your typical notification process for land use applications, is it a 300-foot, 500-foot? Would the 200-foot be different than what you would normally do on any notifications that you send out for a site-specific use?
The 200 feet, actually, we expanded upon. Most of our administrative notices are at 150 feet.
Oh.
If it's a standard SEPA review or a planning director review process, it's 150 feet. If it's something involving a public hearing, hearing examiner, or planning commission, city council, it's 500 feet. And so we actually selected 200 feet just to go a little bit beyond the 150-foot notification of our standard non-hearing type of notifications. Again, taking it a little more conservative.
Sure. And I guess with the commission for consideration, I guess, since the commission recommended to have it be part of a hearing process, I guess I would support what the existing notification process would be, and if the commission does recommend to eliminate the buffer and require a notification, that it be a 500-foot. Because we're essentially going into a different notification process based on the, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, but based on the recommendation for number one, we've gone to a different type of review process, and so would it be prudent to say that those rules should potentially apply if the commission does recommend eliminating the 1,000-foot buffer?
You are correct. If the buffer were to be eliminated or reduced, the 500-foot range of notification is, based upon your first action, would apply, and there would be a hearing. So, yeah, that's a good point.
Other thoughts, comments?
I'd just offer the notion of an amendment to this, potential amendment, and that's to reduce the, rather than eliminating the separation, to reduce it from 500, or from 1,000 to 500 feet.
You might want to make a motion, so we can see...
Okay, I would move an amendment to the main motion, which is to reduce, rather than eliminating the 1,000-foot separation, reduce it to 500 feet.
Second?
Let's see.
Are we confused?
Would that then make it consistent with the first motion when you go in for application?
Has a motion already been made?
I'm sorry, I said motion. With number one's action, that's a question you asked.
Well, I don't think it has any bearing on...
No, I know it doesn't have any, but would it be consistent with the way number one went? It would be a 500-foot?
You would have a 500-foot notification from the boundaries of the property upon which...
Yeah, okay.
...the facility is proposed to be located.
And my proposed amendment is to simply reduce the separation, rather than to eliminate it, to reduce it from 1,000 to 500 feet.
A little second draft? For discussion? Are we ready? Vote on that?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
The proposed amendment, number four, is reduce... Establish a 500-foot separation requirement between production and processing facilities and properties located in residential zones, but establishing a public notification review process, review process number two, when such a use is proposed within 200 feet of a lot in a residential zone.
Actually, that part would become moot.
It would, based upon the first action, so...
Okay.
The Commissioner Zalinski's proposed, or the motion, would, just to make sure I understand it and everybody is understanding this and how it would work, you would reduce the 1,000-foot separation to 500 feet, and based upon the first action, it would already be subject to a review process, three special property use permit hearing, which has a 500-foot range of notifications, so you could strike the, everything after residential zones.
Can I add just a, maybe it might need to be a two-part, for the simple fact that I don't believe the same requirement is for a Tier One. So if it was a Tier One, I don't think you're going through that process, which means that I think the recommendation, or the motion, would need to include two parts. One for Tier One facilities, which could be what is presented tonight, and then with the two Tier and two Three zones, the other review process. So I think it's a little bit longer of a, potentially for a motion. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, good point.
Does that clarify?
I, yeah, that was an excellent catch by Commissioner Holland, so if I might suggest, and if the commission finds acceptable, it would be to reduce the 1,000-foot separation to 500 feet between production and processing facilities and properties located in the residential zone for Tier One, or, excuse me, for Tier Two and Three facilities. But for Tier One facilities, let's see, right now, we still have 1,000, under the current interim regulation, it's still a 1,000-foot separation, so you're still, you're still reducing it from 1,000 feet to something else. And I don't know that we've landed on an appropriate or consensus on the distance between a Tier One and residential zones. So if that's something that you also want to reduce to 500 feet...
Got to be consistent.
It just wouldn't have any notice if the Tier One remains to be permitted without the special property use permit process, but you could make it, you could make it 500 feet, you could make it something less if you wanted to, but right now, the interim regulation is 1,000.
My thought is to reduce the 1,000 feet for all tiers to 500, because my thought, my understanding was that that's the current regulation.
1,000.
Between a production and processing facility at a residential zone, regardless of whether it's Tier One, Two, or Three, there's a 1,000-foot separation currently required.
Correct.
And my proposal is to reduce that to 500.
So the motion just needs to have tiers One, Two, and Three?
Right.
The only difference would be...
The noticing.
That the Tier Ones currently are just reviewed, using review process one, which is administrative, there is no public hearing or notification. The earlier action on item one was to allow for Tier Two and Three, subject to special property use permit, public hearing, public notice.
So could we have number 11 be addressed Tier Ones?
Without the, without the...
With the 500 feet in, so it's consistent.
You know, I think we could go right back and...
Without the SPU, or without the special use permit for Tier One.
I think we could go right back to the eliminating everything after residential zones, because if we did that, you'd still have the range of, I'm sorry, yeah, making it 500 feet, and then eliminating everything else after the comma, because you would still have a special property use permit review for Tier Twos and Threes, and it would just be administrative for Tier Ones.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. So reduce the 1,000-foot separation to 500 feet between production and processing facilities and properties located in residential zones. All right? I think we're ready to vote on that. Kathy?
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
No.
Chair Stewart?
Yes. That motion passed. If I can count, five to one. All right. Moving on to proposed amendment number five. And please introduce it.
Okay. Alan Giffen, staff. The current interim regulation does not allow for retail sales of marijuana in the C2 Everett Station area zone. There's been a request to allow that, to make that change. Staff recommendation is to not, you know what, the recommendation, as worded here, I realize, is talking about the MS zone. It would be, do not allow retail marijuana stores in the C2 ES zone. I apologize for the mix-up on my PowerPoint, but I believe it's worded the way I had intended in the staff recommendation.
Yes. So the staff recommendation from the staff report is that staff recommends that we do not approve adding to the C2 ES, ES zone. All right. So opportunity for public comment on this, starting with Philip Doughty. Okay. He declines to speak on this item. So Arnold Bresser?
My name is Arnold Bresser. I'm going to recommend, if you would please, actually, to deny this, to not allow it. I work, I minister to the homeless on Tuesday evenings in that train station area and in the full gospel mission, and I think it would just be bad for that area to encourage the people already having addiction problems to foster their habit. So if there are no marijuana places there now, I recommend that you not allow them there, plus the bus traffic and trains and whatnot. We don't need, we don't need that. Thank you.
Next to speak is Bob McAllen.
Could I ask a question of you, sir? What is the interim standards on alley access? Could you answer that, please?
Currently, the interim regulations for retail sales of marijuana do not allow parking to come from the alley behind a building if that business zone shares an alley with residential uses. And so that's a recent amendment that the city council made earlier this year.
Great. Thank you. Then I'm going to go with the staff recommendations to not allow retail marijuana stores in the MS zone, particularly since that...
Excuse me, the C2 ES zone. It's, again, I made a typo in the recommendation. We're talking about the Everett Station area zoning, not the MS zone.
Fine.
My mistake.
That's okay. I think you guys know what I'm talking about, right? Okay. We're all on board there, that, you know, they do not allow retail marijuana in the...
Everett Station area zone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think they did a deal not too long ago where they rounded up, I don't know how many arrests were made there, but I know down in Seattle that they forbid the sale of, like, processed alcohol in high-use areas, I think on Second Avenue now, I just read. So they forbid that in intent to keep people that have problems with alcohol from getting easier access to it. So I'd really like you to think about this and prohibit it for that basis alone. Thanks.
Okay. Next is Sonia Bodge.
Hi, Sonia Bodge, fire. Just want to talk again about the decision before you tonight. It's my goal to be a responsible business owner and to be an asset to the city of Everett. I'm an investor in the Pine Street marijuana business and encourage you to recommend adding one retail marijuana store to be permitted, or list as permitted, uses in the C2 ES zone. Due to all of the setbacks already in place, there would only be allowed one store. We have reached out to the surrounding businesses and have yet to receive any negative feedback. Our immediate neighbors are glad that the property has already been approved and that there's a new positive presence. We've kind of combated transient issues and set that aside. We have met with the Everett Station District Alliance and have been greeted with warm enthusiasm. And to the issue of addiction and homelessness, you know, I'm a child of the 80s, I've raised two teenage kids, I've been very open and talked to them a lot about drugs and alcohol. My family's been affected by addiction in several ways. My older daughter worked at Teen Feed on the Ave for two years, and even I went with her sometimes, and I could see how addiction affects people. I don't think marijuana is the big problem out there right now. So that's just a personal comment. In addition to providing a more diverse retail experience to the people of Everett, there are tax revenue benefits to the city. Not only will the city benefit from the taxes set aside for state and county 502 education and programs, but the city can directly benefit from the tax revenue sharing plans currently being negotiated in the legislature. They're still working out some of that tax sharing program, so do think about that. Our Pine Street location is already state-licensed and ready to open. A livable city has a variety and places where people can walk from their home to shops, restaurants, and also be near transit. The people of Everett are ready to diversify and want livable, more urban homes, retail variety, transit options, and employment opportunities in the area around the Everett Station. After finding an online public survey, I believe the city put this out there, dated from November 13th to January 14th, I read that the people of Everett want more development of the downtown core and the Everett Station area. They ask for more employment, more shops and restaurants, and a more positive atmosphere. This should include retail marijuana in the C2 ES zone. I think Everett is ready to offer an attractive alternative to their larger neighbors, Seattle being the main one. Creating a livable city only attracts people and employers, and that just keeps compounding. So thank you.
Next is Dennis Kavanagh, who I note has left. And then Brian Bodge is next. And then anybody else who'd like to speak, feel free to hand the sheet to the clerk or myself.
Ashley, could you come back? I want to hear about the alcohol impact.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brian Bodge, 3225 Pine Street. So this, the particular property in question here is at 3223 Pine Street, next to my home. I've done a great deal of outreach in the area with the local businesses, not to mention the Everett Station District Alliance. I've got several letters of support from business owners and property owners in the area in support of my efforts. Also reached out to the owners of the Holiday Inn property, who have notified them of my intended activities there. They have not provided, they have not provided any sort of opposition whatsoever. And in addition, the properties have been improved significantly, and I think that the information that I've provided up to this date, I think I just want to reiterate, you know, what I've stated, and that tax revenue from this will be a good, another benefit to the city, and the jobs that will be created from this effort, and I appreciate your support on this. Thanks.
Okay. Next, Philip Doughty.
Hi, Philip Doughty, representing Mojo Rising. I just wanted, in a former life, I used to be a city hall reporter at Seattle Weekly, and I happened to be covering city hall when the alcohol-impact-area stuff came in in Seattle, and I just wanted to refine some of the information that gentleman gave you, and I mean this respectfully, of course. What it was, was a ban on the sale of fortified malt liquor and fortified wines in those zones, and these are in cities like Tacoma and Seattle mostly. I think Spokane has one as well. It was not a ban on sales of alcohol, or Bud, or Bud Light, it was just very specific fortified, you know, jacked-up stuff. There is one 502 retail store open in an alcohol-impact area in Seattle, that is the famous Uncle Ices at 23rd and Union, and there's not a problem with homeless congregating around, trying to get free pot from somebody or anything like that. As a matter of fact, that is one of the most infamous corners in Seattle for shootings, and in the last two years, with the new development that's come in, and the pot shop and everything, crime has just almost disappeared from that corner. I'm supportive of these people being able to open in this zone. I know how difficult it is to go through the liquor board application process, get a license in a lottery, and do all the right things to get set up to open. It would almost, it would just be heartbreaking to see them not be able to open there when they meet all the other standards everybody's looking for, including the liquor board in the city. Thank you.
Next is Alan Poehl.
Alan Poehl, Everett, Washington, address on file, I'm down in the View Ridge, Madison neighborhood. Number of issues coming up here, I didn't know what the format was coming in, didn't realize this is going to be going on event by event, so I've refrained from commenting. I've talked to you folks before, so you probably know where I stand on these issues, and I would just have to second what was said before, that we're not really in favor of any kind of proliferation. This is one I can support. If you're not going to allow retail marijuana in the C2 ES zone, then I would, that's one thing I think we can agree on, for which I can appreciate. I have, looking around the room here, I'm, would probably bet a paycheck, I'm the oldest person in this room. I'm already drawing social security at full retirement age. I've lived longer than most of you folks. I've seen what it does. I've seen it in the Army back in the 60s and 70s when I was on active duty. I don't think we need to be sending and telegraphing the message to young people, old people, anybody, that it's okay. One reason I refrained from it, and one reason I was in alcohol use and cut off from it, very simple selfish reasons. I don't like doing things that are bad for my body. There's not anybody in this room that can convince me or provide any kind of data that this recreational use is good for you. You might say, well, a little bit of here and there is going to be okay, it's not gonna, it's not going to hurt you a little bit here and there. That's fine. That's the matter of opinion, but it's just, the overuse is definitely going to hurt. I don't think there should be any question about that. And I think as far as the tax revenue goes, I hope you folks can see, we don't want to have the city of Everett be penny-wise and pound foolish. Please be very skeptical, as a minimum, about any kind of claims about additional tax revenue. As I've mentioned before, let me mention it again, all you're doing is moving money around. There's money that might be going someplace else, is going to go instead into recreational marijuana sales. It's not going to be a net increase. As I mentioned before, let me use the figure again, it's not, we're not drilling a new hole in the ground to get a gusher of new money, fresh money coming into the city. That's just simply not going to happen. And also, consider the message that you're telegraphing, because I mentioned before, Colorado and Washington are already attracting all kinds of people who are probably less than desirable citizens, because the whole attitude of drug use is loosening up. That's the message that's being telegraphed by the legalization of, per I-502. The more we can do to restrict that, the better. You're not going to be attracting businesses that are going to be, I've mentioned examples of that before, I'm not going to reiterate that, you're not going to be attracting businesses that are going to be more, let's say, realistic about uses of it. You're not going to be able to prohibit employers. I don't care what you folks come up with, or what the city commission eventually votes, you're not going to be able to prohibit major employers with real paychecks and big budgets from having screening tests and so forth. So if, I guess the future of Everett is to large, it's somewhat in your hands, it's ultimately going to be in the, in the city of Everett's, and I don't want to be sending the wrong message to the world that, you know, come on in, the water's fine. So please, please consider that, and please restrict the use in the C2 ES zone. And I just want to, I have more to say, but hope it'll be in a future amendment. Thank you.
All right. Kent Peverley.
Kent Peverley, 312 Hex Drive, here in Everett. I speak in opposition to allowing marijuana retail stores in the C2 ES zone. As I understand the difference between the ES portion against the C2 itself, one of the condition... the conditions is that the ES portion does not allow adult retail establishments. And this is certainly an adult retail establishment that's being proposed because of the age cutoff of 21. And therefore, I think that if you allow the marijuana retail establishment in this zone, you're also opening it up then for other retail, other adult retail establishments, which I believe is not in line with what the city is actively proposing when they establish the C2 ES zone. Also, I'd like to address the portion of the package you have that has the slides in it, I believe Mr. Bodge provided, specifically talking about the potential revenue from House Bill 2136. I just want to remind everyone that this proposed legislation is just that. It's just proposed. It is not progressing very fast through the legislature. As of today, when I checked the bill website, it hasn't gone anywhere since the 1st of May. And if I might interject, a personal note based on my observation of the legislature, and I don't have any connection with any particular legislator, I don't believe the Senate, in their budget negotiations which is going on right now, will probably be willing to give up any revenue to the local jurisdictions. They want to use that, I believe, to balance their budget that they have proposed on the table. So, at this point then, I would suggest that there really isn't any budget, I mean, tax revenue sharing that you should be considering. The only valid tax revenue you can consider is the local sales tax. But on the other hand, I would suggest that the whole discussion about revenue isn't really in your hands. That is really more in the purview of the city council when they're dealing with their deliberations on their budget. Your avenue of discussion here is dealing specifically with land use, and I don't believe that revenue should be really a part of the consideration deliberation. Thank you.
Any other comments on proposed amendment number five? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
To close the public hearing. Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
All right. There were some comments made regarding sort of the definition of an adult use. Could staff respond to that, please?
With, Alan Giffen, city staff, within our zoning code, we do have regulations pertaining to adult retail and definitions that would not include the sale of, retail sale of marijuana as a adult retail activity that's really oriented more toward sexually oriented materials and not for marijuana.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Zalinski?
I'm wondering if Mr. Giffen can just give us a, and I apologize for not having been present for some of your past workshops on this topic, but the property on Pine Street, can you give us some permitting history on that?
The city has never approved any license. The state did approve a retail license after an apparent non-response from the city when it was circulated by the Liquor Control Board. Not sure where in the city's system it, the license commenting opportunity with the state fell through, but the city did not provide any comments to the Liquor Control Board and they issued a license. If that was the nature of the question.
There was no kind of permit at all required for setting up this business in this location?
Well, it's not an exist, it's not a business, yet the city would require a business license. The city has not approved a business license for this use, and there would be some building code requirements and parking standards and so forth that would have to be met in order for a business to be established in what has been a house. The city hasn't issued any permits because the use is not allowed.
Other questions, comments?
Alan, the, so it meets all park setbacks, school setbacks, all of those things. What is the, what's the reasoning for not recommending it in the C2 ES?
Again, this is a recommendation from city administration that the type of redevelopment that we're encouraging in the downtown, excuse me, the Everett Station area for mixed-use housing and some of the transition from formerly industrial uses to other professional office-type uses. The city just wanted to take a cautious approach on this. It's not any reflection on Mr. Bodge at all.
No, I didn't say it was that. I was just trying, because I was at the meeting where he met with all the property owners and specifically on the Everett Station redevelopment. And I would say that the over two-thirds of the property ownership in that corridor were there and that they had no problems. And he's talked to all the existing businesses and most of the time, we don't get that kind of cooperation. So I, that's why I was asking why the staff was recommending, and maybe the staff hadn't heard the dialogue between the neighborhood and the property owners.
Now, we were in attendance at that meeting as well, and we've seen the correspondence that's been provided. It's in your packet tonight.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Holland?
Question, Alan, is there any other restrictions on retail uses in the C2 ES zone other than what's being proposed tonight?
The only one mentioned, and I'd have to go back and check the code, was adult retail, but I suspect that that was probably because our adult retail regulation preceded the establishment of the C2 ES zoning. So it wasn't added when we added the C2 ES zone.
So any other type of, general retail facility, that corner grocery or things like that would be permitted?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I guess just one other quick question regarding the proposed change to the alley use. I didn't see that that was, I know it's particular to this particular amendment, but I didn't see it on any of the others. So that proposal in the recommendation would only apply to this particular zone, but the interim regulations would roll over to what council had recommended previously on not allowing rear-loaded parking. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is that something that we can address as we go, get past number 10? If I'd like to. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jordison?
And as I recollect, initially, the C2 ES zone was not selected as a zone where it was intentionally prohibited. It was just, you know, it was brought up and then we became aware that it wasn't a permitted use in that zone, but it wasn't initially selected as a zone where it would be prohibited.
That's correct.
And so in retrospect, you know, apparently that the staff has looked at it and thought about it and decided that they're recommending that it not be a permitted use there. So that's something that's come about since the initial application, and I believe the applicant initially approached the city council and they were sent back to us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
If there aren't any further questions, yes?
Just one comment. I'm actually very familiar with Pioneer Square in Seattle and with the dispensary that was mentioned previously. I'm also familiar with the medical dispensary that's down there as well, and in no way has this deterred economic development. If anything, it has actually helped promote it because these are responsible tenants that really care about their facilities and have cleaned them up, and they work with the city in terms of creating appropriate design, scale. That's been my experience, having worked down in Pioneer Square for the past year.
If there aren't further comments on this proposed amendment, do I hear a motion regarding proposed amendment number five?
I'll make a motion. I would move to allow retail marijuana stores in the MS, or excuse me, in the C2 ES zone. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Guess we'll call for the vote. Commissioner Zalinski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. So we're moving on to amendment number six. And for those of you in the audience who have submitted one of these half sheets, I will keep calling your name even if you haven't, I will go through. You don't have to fill out a new sheet each time for, to test, to talk to one of these amendments. So, we're now on number six. And I will have Commissioner, or excuse me, Director Giffen introduce that item.
Alan Giffen, planning staff, this is a proposal to create some design standards for the building facade of retail stores. This was something that was brought up by one of the former commissioners during the earlier workshops as it pertains to one or more of the existing retail stores within the city. There are some state regulations that actually discourage visibility into the business. However, that doesn't mean that the building has to necessarily be a blank wall or unarticulated. And so the commissioner, former commissioner, had recommended the establishment of some design standards. What we have recommended is something that we borrowed out of the Evergreen Way zoning where it gives a retail business menu of choices from which they would have to select, I believe, three different treatments on the facade of their building. It may not have the transparency that we would like in most retail zones, but that's a conflict, that would be a conflict with state regulations. But it would establish some minimum amount of thought to the design of the front facades of buildings. So that is the recommendation.
Okay. And the commission will note on page six is the proposed additional conditions related to design standards.
Thank you.
All right. So we will take public comments on proposed amendment number six. Philip Doughty? Will not be commenting on this one. Arnold Brassur?
No comment.
Okay.
Most businesses, oh, Arnold Brassur, most businesses, when they set themselves up, they look to advertise themselves and to promote their product and make it as glamorous as possible to entice folks to come in and do business, whether that's something on sale or whether it's a pretty picture or something. My recommendation, I have no idea if this applies at all because it's talking about facades, but my recommendation is that the store be as plain as possible, limiting itself perhaps to the business name. Thank you.
Next, Bob McCowen? Okay, declines to comment on this. Sonia Bodge? Okay, declines to comment. Dennis Kavanaugh, I've noticed he's left the room. Brian Bodge?
No comment.
No comment on this one. Kent Peverly? No comment. Alan Poehl?
No comment.
No comment. And those are all the sign-in sheets I've received. Anybody care to comment who hasn't signed up yet on proposed amendment number six? Yes, you may.
I don't have to comment, but I have my question.
Would you mind approaching the podium and giving your name and your address for the record, and then you can ask your question?
Okay, before the address, I guess that's what, I'm an industry expert. I service over 40 retail marijuana outlets within the state. And while I am not a local to this area, I have heard many things about the city of Everett and the situation going on, and I was curious if I may comment to the commission regardless.
Absolutely. So if you wouldn't mind just giving your name and then your address, just for the record.
Perfect. My name is Stuart Everett Abbott. I am on the board of directors of a company called Moon Bay Incorporated, and I am a resident of 8871 Southeast Clearwater Lane, Port Orchard, Washington, 98367. Thank you. No comment on this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
All right. So, any comments, questions from the commission on this proposed amendment number six? Commissioner Holland?
Just a comment that, and maybe Alan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the state really dictates the signage should be allowed for marijuana retail facilities, which is more restrictive than what the city currently has in place. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Are there design standards around it or just what it can say and how big the letters and?
The state regulations don't deal with the design of a building or the sign other than that there's no transparency allowed so that a person from the outside of the building could see inside of the building and the activity or the product.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jordison?
I don't think you can have an image of like a marijuana leaf on your sign, can you? I wouldn't, I wouldn't think. I'm not, I'm just curious.
I believe that is correct, that the state regulations are more restrictive than the city's sign regulations with regard to retail marijuana stores.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, if someone would care to make a motion?
Move to approve revisions to the retail marijuana store regulations concerning building facade design standards in all zones where retail stores are allowed.
And I will second that. Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
So I'm noting that it's 10 minutes before nine, and we still have a number of more amendments to go, or up to seven. When it's nine o'clock, we do need to discuss whether or not, how much longer we would like to continue our meeting. That's in our bylaws, as I recall. So just wanted to make a note of that in case I miss the nine o'clock deadline. So should we, does anybody need a break, or should we keep moseying along here and do the next number seven? We're okay to keep going for a while?
Let's get it done.
All right. So, we are now on proposed amendment number seven. And Steph, hear your comments.
Alan Giffen, city staff, this one is a recommendation to approve eliminating the A1 zone from the list of zones in which production and processing facilities are permitted. Staff recommends your approval.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will take public comments on this. Philip Doughty? Declines to comment. Arnold Brassur?
Is this what we're talking about here, just puts on the slide? Is that slide correct?
No, that, no, that's correct. So I'll let you read that and consider for a moment.
No comment.
Oh, no comment on that? Okay. Bob McCowen? No comment on that? Okay. Bob McCowen?
Please hit up. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
This is Director Georgie, sir. What is an A1 zone?
The A1 zone is an agricultural zone. It's primarily located within the floodplain down off of Lowell-Arima Road. A little bit of the A1 zoning goes up the hill in Lowell, and it's more of a rural kind of residential area. But, for the most part, it's in the floodplain of the Snohomish River.
Okay. So, let's approve this change. Thank you.
All right, next is Sonia Bodge. Would you like to comment on this? Nope, chooses to pass on this one. Dennis Kavanaugh, who is no longer in the room. Brian Bodge?
No comment.
No comment from him. Kent Peverly, no comment. Alan Poehl, no comment. Anyone else in the audience care to comment on proposed amendment number seven? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second. Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes. All right. Any discussion on this item? Are we ready for a motion? I know we've talked about this before, but—
It just seems moot that you would have this in the ag zone. If it's a flood zone, you couldn't build any structures down there anyway. So, I mean, if it—I—it seems unnecessary and superfluous.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'm going to motion that if the recommendation is to approve this change, I'm going to say to reject the staff recommendation and to not add additional regulation.
Okay. Do we hear a second to that motion? Hearing none—
Can I make a kind suggestion for an amendment here?
Sorry, it was too—
To eliminate the A1 zone from the list of zones in which production and processing are permitted.
That's right. That's what I meant.
Is that—okay. All right. Now, do we hear a second to that proposed motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Further discussion? I think we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Moving on to proposed amendment number eight. Steph?
Alan Giffen, city staff. This is a suggestion that came up through the public comment process to also add churches, synagogues, temples, and mosques to the list of sensitive land uses that would require a 1,000-foot separation for recreational marijuana businesses. And while most of our recommendations have been based upon taking a conservative approach, the reason that staff has recommended not approving this approach is that under the state's system, we are allowed to have not more than five retail marijuana stores. We have three in operation. We have one that we're aware of in a zone where it would be permitted. However, when we map all of the churches in the community, all of those stores become non-conforming. It does significantly reduce the availability of land for additional retail marijuana stores. It's—from your last action or two items ago with adding the C-2 ES zone, assuming that the city council were to agree with that, we would have all five of our licensed or authorized by the state in the lottery system, retail marijuana stores established presumably in the near future. So, in one sense, it probably doesn't make a lot of difference because even with the addition of that, at least as far as retail stores are concerned, it would—it would not affect them if they're already licensed and permitted. I presume that that will happen. The only—the one that—in the C-2 ES zone is the only one that is at least 1,000 feet away from a church, as I recall from our mapping exercise. And so, it wouldn't affect the one on Pine Street. But all the others would be made non-conforming. But it really won't cause them to close down or relocate if they're already approved. So, it's kind of a moot point as well.
Okay, thank you. But there could possibly be a fifth retail store that hasn't been proposed yet.
There is one that's proposed. It just doesn't have its license yet. They—and they're located in an area where they too would become non-conforming if this amendment were approved. I should probably offer a few more comments just about the production and processing, too, because that would also be affected by—by this. And it would probably affect a few parcels of land that—where we have churches in or near industrial zones. And with the amendment that you approved earlier to allow production and processing within 500 feet of residential zones, it probably creates a little bit more of an opportunity for conflict between a church and a production facility. But I don't have that quantified, especially based upon the amendment that was just made, where we haven't analyzed how this would interplay with the 500-foot separation requirement.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, why don't we take public comment on proposed amendment number eight? Philip Doughty?
Philip Doughty, mojo rising. I need to ask your planning director a question. Do I—do I have an issue with the church at 1,000 feet up on that bluff? I don't know.
By knowledge, you do not.
Okay. Don't have a problem, but nonetheless, I will tell you that anything that really dramatically reduces the footprint for licensed facilities in the city really makes things difficult to work with, you know, forces people into awkward buildings. And, you know, I can tell you from my history as a reporter and dealing with planning stuff, don't give planning departments any more non-conforming uses than they can handle. Thanks.
All right, next, Arnold Bresser?
This item should be approved. You should listen to the people. If the people by comment brought this in front of you, listen to those who elected you or appointed you. Listen to the people. Protect our children. I'm a member of Sunrise Christian Center. And kids are coming and going out of our facility all of the time. I read in the proposal that if you have a church with a school—well, we have schooling. I don't know whether you would call it a formal school, like Catholic school down the street that has, you know, Monday through Friday classes or whatever. We need to protect our kids. I hear all this stuff about taxes and money and bringing in revenue. People, I don't want my kids exposed to this. It should be my ability to parent as I choose to parent and encourage my kids and not have to walk outside and have them be tempted by something else which isn't, in my opinion, godly, at the very least not healthy, and at the very most, my parenting. Please, adopt the 1,000-foot limit for churches also.
Bob McCowen?
Thank you for letting me speak again. My grandpa died of alcohol poisoning down in Pioneer Square. And when I got out of the drug trade in 1974, the guy I was working with was bringing in 400 pounds of weed a month. So, I've been delivered from that lifestyle. It's a—it's a very addictive drug. And I live in Snohomish, but I go to church in Everett, and I have been for the last 18 years. I'm asking you to hold that buffer to 1,000 feet. I really think it's important that you look at what the American Medical Association is saying, what the American Pediatric Association is saying, what the Lancet Journal, the most renowned psychiatric journal in the world, is saying about marijuana. They're saying it's bad. It's destroying brain cells. It's causing birth defects. That kid that killed all those kids up there in Marysville, the toxicology report, he was loaded on THC. It was just—it was out of his gourd. This is not the stuff that I used to sell back in the '70s. This is high potent. It's not regulated. The Lancet Report has said that the chances of kids using this stuff is five times more likely they're going to have a psychotic break. If you think we got problems with paranoid schizophrenics and people living on the street with mental illness—illnesses, you ain't seen nothing yet. So, we need your help. We need you to hold the line on this because the kids get the message like it's okay. When I'm working crime watch in Snohomish, what's happened since I-502 has happened is a real surly attitude. You know what? It's their right. And you know what they say to me? It's my right. I can smoke weed. And I'm saying, no, you can't on public property. It's not legal. There has been such a degradation of disrespect—of respect that is coupled with this. It's not just another thing instead of alcohol. So, you know, even the head doctor at Children's Orthopedic Hospital warned us against it, saying, no, this is not good. We're not heading in the right direction. Like—I like that one sign that's on—what's it? Dunlumber. It says, only dead fish go with the flow. So, it's really important that you hold the line. I go against the grain of public opinion right now. I know that you say that it's going to change, but when you look at what Soros put into this campaign of I-502, over $15 million. And when I talked to Pat Slack, he's the head of the Drug and Gang and Task Force in Snohomish County, over a cup of coffee, and when they censored him and sent him home, he's the top cop for drugs and for gangs. They censored him. You got to see, there's a big, big picture here. It's not just mom and pop wanting to grow a little weed and then sell it out the back door. Uh-uh. This has got some major, major repercussion that Big Tobacco wants to take over. 1,000-foot buffer setback from churches is the least you can do. Thanks.
Sonia Bodge? Okay. Dennis Kavanaugh is no longer in the room. Brian Bodge?
Brian Bodge, address on record. I—I support the staff's recommendation on this. One of the reasons is, is that 1,000-foot adding another separation requirement to the already existing requirements will make it virtually impossible for any retail business or producer, processor, processor to move or to find another more adequate, a better location than they have. There's very limited amount of space out there now as it is. So, I would just reiterate, I support the staff's recommendation on this.
Kent Peverly?
Kent Peverly, address is on record. I'm speaking also in favor of adding churches to this restrictive zone, the sensitive area zone. You know, when one reads the list of the sensitive uses that are already protected within this 1,000-foot zone, it's quite apparent that young people and children are the targeted population that are being protected from exposure by proximity to these establishments. So, why is this important? Well, it's important to protect our people from those experiences which distract from their development into useful and productive citizens. Recognition of the inherent potential danger to youth and children was included in the body of I-502 by the very inclusion of the sensitive areas. The Liquor Control Board is also tasked, in their job description, with minimizing the exposure of people under 21 years of age to the advertising. And the further recognition of these dangers is evidenced by the fact that I-502 provided for the distribution of a portion of the tax revenues to research, study, disseminate information, and educate generally the public about the effects of using marijuana. The Liquor Control Board's education website itself is intend—and I quote here—is intended to provide an introduction to the laws regarding use and potential health impacts of marijuana, especially on youth. And if you go to that website, there is on—it's the education link on—the Liquor Control Board's website. You'll see there a list of resources that receive some of these funds and provide plenty of information about these dangers. This—these here are just some of the resources they have. Most of them addressing the hazards and the challenges and the ill benefits of using marijuana, especially for youth. And a lot of these resources come from the University of Washington itself. So, churches and worship centers are just another place where people and—young people and children gather. These are the same individuals who are afforded a buffer zone of protection during their other portions of their life, but not in this case. Their parents are concerned about their children the same as other parents who do not attend worship activities or facilities. And as the effects of marijuana usage among young people becomes more known, it is imperative that we make the most of available protections. Inclusion of churches in the 1,000-foot buffer protection of the sensitive use category is just one step in protecting a next generation. I advocate that you please accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alan Poehl?
I'll be brief because you all mentioned the nine o'clock time. And it's also, right now, whatever time, it's probably about 15 minutes past my normal bedtime as it is. So, I'll be brief doubly so. But, like I mentioned in previous workshop, I would like for you to include churches and worship centers in this 1,000-foot stayout zone, if you will, from retail marijuana centers and production facilities for the reasons I mentioned before, is that many churches run, like I've mentioned before, daycare centers, day schools. Parents bring their children and meeting with other parents. Those go on the other six days of the week, youth programs in the evening. That's what's happening at—maybe not the majority, but a very, very large number of churches. And you're already affording this protection, the 1,000-foot rule to secular daycare centers. My question is, why would we discriminate, in this case, against churches that are doing the same thing, but they're doing it, in most cases, for free or as a ministry? I'm going to also have to emphasize again, there was some skepticism that was voiced by members of the commission before. This is not a church and state issue. This is entirely a question of are we going to afford churches the same protection that we're already proposing to—for secular? And I'm willing to discuss that offline tomorrow, any other time, to any degree desired. And just want to close it in—it's just what—I forgot to mention last time. It's a little bit frustrating to have other municipalities—Snohomish was one of them—Snohomish County, and it was more than just the 85 people that was mentioned, and the—rural areas are prohibiting this. Everett, again, like I've also mentioned, was 20-some-odd-year—about 26 years—years ago when I moved here, was a nicer place to live. This is not a step in the right direction. And—I would really like you to reconsider and reverse the language on that to prohibit the 1,000-foot stayout zone to include churches and places of worship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all the folks that have signed in to speak on this proposed amendment number eight. Is there anybody else who would like to speak about it? Yes, sir?
I have my sheet as well. Can I just introduce myself?
Yes, your name and address for the record again. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Everett Abbott. I am a industry representative. My address is 8871— My address is 8871 Southeast Clearwater Lane, Port Orchard, Washington, 98367. I would like to recommend that you take the staff recommendation of not approving this change. As a participant in this industry and also as a former church member myself, I have been in and out of more than 60 retail stores across the entire state and would like to say that the current attitude among retail store owners has been to avoid servicing underage, potential underage consumers of cannabis. They have restrictions in place that are even, that go beyond that of alcohol or other adult restrictive services. For example, regardless of age, many of these stores check ID at the door and sometimes even at the point of purchase. Consumers regardless of age cannot even touch the product. Store owners, employees, time and time again, agree that, you know, our children do need to be protected. And I believe, especially with I-502's language, with the existing land barriers and the language within, suggests that they've gone above and beyond to protect our children already. And so, I think with the issue, I understand the issue and empathize with the need to be conservative, but I believe that with the existing language and the existing attitudes of compliance with retailers, that the language does go far enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak on this item? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on amendment, proposed amendment number eight?
So moved.
Seconded.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes. And I'd like to correct myself. I know I had said 9:00, I thought was the key time in our bylaws, and I did have an opportunity to consult Article 4, Section 1 in our bylaws, and the time is actually 9:30, so.
Bring it up.
Yeah, we have a little, we have 17 minutes here. All right. So, next step would be, are there any questions, comments that the commissioners have regarding this proposed amendment number eight?
I have just.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Jordison.
I wouldn't for a moment, in any way diminish the importance of churches and other faith-based organizations and wouldn't for a moment minimalize their contribution. However, I think our conviction of freedom of religion is so important in our culture and also freedom from religion. And, you know, the influence of the church or temple or whatever, you know, I think it has to be limited to the boundaries and limits of church property. And if we start using our government to impose, you know, the wishes of a church in expanding that boundary outward, I think that we leave the realm of having a secular government. And that creates all sorts of problems and all sorts of issues and complexities that I don't really think that we can realistically cope with. Plus, we weaken our conviction to freedom of religion and freedom from religion. So, I'm okay with all the sort of, all the philosophical aspects of it, and I think that the staff recommendation shows great wisdom, not for the reasons that they give, but I still believe that they're showing a great deal of wisdom with this. So, I'm fully supporting the staff recommendation on this one.
Other comments, discussion?
Alan, I asked this question before, and I as well respect those comments, and I do value the voters that get disappointed in those things, those comments. But it's around the, what's the definition of a church? I mean, I don't, I know what a church is, I belong to a church, okay? It's not so much that, but I would just like to better understand that this couldn't be a vehicle for maybe someone to start a church someplace to cause disruption to this whole process.
Well, because it's a land use issue, we define churches in context of how the land is used. And if it was, say, for example, a building was primarily a house that had a Bible study or a religious gathering on occasion, we would not consider that to be a church, we would consider it to be a house. However, a building and a property that is used for worship purposes primarily may also have other functions such as a daycare or a school or, and if it does have, under the state law, the equivalent of classes like a public school does on, you know, Monday to Friday type of basis, then it would qualify for the protection as a sensitive land use, as a school as well. But as a land use, it would be, you know, something that's different than a business, different from a residential use, but certainly something where people gather, congregate for purposes of worship. And that's how we would recognize a church were it added to the list of sensitive land uses.
So, it would get a business license or whatever the church has?
No, it doesn't have to have a business license, to my knowledge. I'm not an expert on the business licenses, but I don't think that churches are required for, to have business licenses.
So, I could put a sign out in front of my building and say, I'm a church and as long as I'm at the conditions?
We would, you know, I guess if somebody says that they're a church and they're in a building that usually would be an assembly building of some sort, we'd probably take them at the word. However, if there were, you know, a reason for us to believe that it was not a church, it was being used for something else, you know, we'd just look at, how is the property used? Does it really meet a definition of church or does it meet a definition of some other type of land use?
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the staff recommendation.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, so we, yeah, I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay. Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes. All right. That one passed unanimously. So, now we are, we have two, two more proposed amendments. So, amendment number nine. I'll let staff introduce that one. Thank you.
Okay, this would be a proposal that came out of our public comments during the workshops to eliminate the 2,500-foot separation requirement between retail uses, and staff is recommending not to approve that change.
So, opportunity for a public comment on proposed amendment number nine. Philip Doughty? Arnold Bresser? Do you have comments on number nine?
Uses, does that mean between retail stores or?
Yes, yes.
Currently, there has to be a 2,500-foot law?
Yes.
Correct.
I recommend that if there is a 2,500-foot rule between retail establishments, I recommend that be kept or increased.
Okay. Bob McGowan? Okay, no comment. Sonia Bodge? No comment. Dennis Kavanaugh, no longer in the room. Brian Bodge?
Brian Bodge, address on record. I would recommend to eliminate the 2,500-foot separation for the same reason as any other additional restrictions will just reduces the amount of available land to move or recite any of these properties to find alternate locations. Thank you.
Kent Peverley? No comment. Ellen Poehl, I believe, has left the room. Stuart Everett Abbott?
No comment.
No comment? Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody else in the room who would like to offer comment on proposed amendment number nine? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
All right. And any discussion amongst the commissioners regarding this proposed amendment?
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Giffen. As I understand it, this separation requirement was put into place before we knew that there was a maximum of five retail establishments in the city of Everett. Is that correct?
I'm not sure if that's correct. I don't recall the timing if, I believe that we actually did know that there were going to be not more than five in the city when this was established. But I'd have to go back to the record to say that for sure.
Because to my mind, that kind of a requirement makes sense if you're not, if we don't know that we could conceivably have 20 or more applications here, but knowing that we're only going to get five and three are already established, my inclination is to eliminate it. Because my thought is, by having the separation, you're going to actually impact additional neighborhoods, whereas if you go in, if they cluster, if you get one that goes in next to an existing one, you're impacting the same neighborhood. And my inclination is to think that the impact on the neighborhood of two is not substantially greater than the impact of one, but that the impact of one is substantially greater than the impact of zero. And you'll be potentially adding two neighborhoods to an impact area by maintaining the separation.
I guess I've thought about this separation as sort of the idea of decentralizing, instead of having a part of town that you would go to for any particular use, that it wouldn't be like that, concentrating as opposed to decentralizing.
To me, if you don't know the number, that's a legitimate concern, but if we know there's only going to be five, that becomes less of a concern, I think.
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner Holland?
Yeah, I look at it as similar to what the county council just recently did, and I believe it's in the Clearview area where every block, there's another, and I think it's a medical, not necessarily a retail establishment, but they actually had to put a moratorium or kibosh on any of those setting up there because it was impacting a centralized area so greatly, you can't even drive down that corridor without a green cross either, you know, the right or left of the street. So, I would be in favor of keeping the separation. With the five uses, it would scatter it. It does put a little bit of a restriction on where you can locate, but I think a half-a-mile separation is, or approximately, is adequate.
Other discussion? Anybody ready to make a motion?
I approve to accept the staff recommendation.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Ready for the vote? Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Zelinski?
No.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
No.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
All right. So, our last item in terms of the proposed amendments that are included in the staff report is number 10, and I'll have Director Giffen describe that one.
Yes, as I mentioned in the staff report, this is one that the mayor asked me to add to the list, to require a separation of 1,000 feet between production and processing facilities. So, although your first item limited to one tier one, or excuse me, one tier two and one tier three, and the tier ones currently do not have this requirement, the idea was to really avoid the de facto creation of a tier three by having a building full of tier ones. And so, the recommendation is to have a separation between production and processing facilities.
Okay, thank you. So, we will take public comments on proposed amendment number 10. Philip Doughty?
Philip Doughty, mojo rising, and I'm just really here to get a little bit of clarification from Mr. Giffen. The way you're envisioning this is a producer-processor license, I mean, they're going to be in separate parts of their own building. You know, at tier three, the production's going to be in that part of the building and the packaging and all of that, which is the processing, is going to be down in the, you know, down the hall, the other end of the building. That wouldn't affect that, would it?
It would not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Arnold Bresser? No comments on this item. Bob McGowan? Would you like to comment on proposed amendment number 10?
Thank you again, and I think requiring a separation distance of 1,000 feet between production and/or processing facility is a good idea. So, let's get out of here by 9:30 and vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sonia Bodge? All right. And Dennis Kavanaugh, no longer in the room. Brian Bodge?
No comment.
No comment on that one. Kent Peverley? No comment. Ellen Poehl is no longer in the room. Stuart Everett Abbott? You'd like a comment?
Stuart Everett Abbott, address on the record. I would suggest that you go against the staff recommendation, one reason being that the vote already restricting tier two and tier three licenses to one already puts an undue burden on license holders, and the I-502 language already states that license holders can only, even on tier one, can only hold a certain number of licenses within a county. So, the fears of having multiple tier ones under one roof could be dissuaded based off the ownership restrictions based in the I-502 language. So, I would suggest that the 100-foot restriction wouldn't necessarily be necessary to avoid something that's already in the language of the law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else care to speak on this proposed amendment number 10? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
All right. So, discussion amongst the commissioners regarding this proposed amendment.
I'd like to add one comment. I don't see the need for additional regulation right now because I think we have covered it, and the fact that these facilities, we're only, we've limited them to one, we've recommended only one tier two, tier three, so the likelihood of those two being in close proximity just based on size is very, very low, low. And so, I don't see the need for additional, a recommendation of code at this point.
Okay. Other comments? Would you care to make a motion? See if...
I motion that we do not approve this change of requiring... I motion that we do not approve this change of requiring a separation distance of 1,000 feet between production and/or processing facilities.
Do we hear a second?
I'm going to second that.
Okay, is there some discussion that we should have before we get a vote on this one? Okay, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Zalinski?
No.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
No.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to not require the separation has passed. So that was the last of our proposed amendments. Do any of the commissioners have any additional proposed amendments or other comments? Commissioner Holland?
I do, and I hate to do this to you, but Alan, on page seven, is the language in 10C, is that the language that was approved by council to limit the alley access? Or is it a different section that we don't have in front of us tonight?
It is the section in 10C. However, the highlighted language would be added in response to your allowing that in the C2ES zone. This is something that had been requested by Mr. Bodge that should you approve or recommend approval of the change in the C2ES zone. He has a more unique situation than exists in many of the other areas where you could have retail and residential sharing the same alley for access. In this case, the only residential use that is sharing the same alley as his proposed retail store is a building that he owns and according to his testimony, lives in. So it wouldn't really create the conflict with other residential uses in this specific instance.
Okay, just another quick question. I noticed it says residential use, but not necessarily zone. Typically, if you were to establish a business in a business zone and the adjacent use is maybe single-family, but it's a, or excuse me, the adjacent use is single-family but zoned a business use, that would preclude them from locating there unless they meet one of these criteria. Is that correct? Because it's just based on use, not based on zone, when actually the residential use is the non-conforming use?
Well, as adopted by the council, which is the language that's not highlighted, it was intended to be residential use because you do have, in some commercial zones where the retail marijuana stores are allowed, residential use is always also a permitted use. And we've had some, quite a bit of testimony about one particular instance within the city. And that was the intent of the city council was to regulate it by residential use and not by zone.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to, and I know I've put it on record before, is just to state that I hope the council thinks about that particular language in the existing temporary regulations, just related to just urban design and those things. And to require folks to become non-conforming, which two of the uses now that are already retail established are now non-conforming based on the regulations put into place based on one existing residential use, or excuse me, retail use, just doesn't go in line with all of the goals and policies and design requirements that we've adopted previously. So I'd hope that they would consider that in their deliberations for our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from commissioners? Okay, as I understand it, so we've gone through the 10 amendments, but staff has asked us to refer to the resolution that's attached in our packet here. And I think we need to confirm our position on all the 10 amendments, as I'm understanding it. But perhaps I'll ask Director Giffen to make sure that we're addressing what we need to address at this point.
Approve the resolution.
Just approve the resolution, you think? Okay. So we do have the resolution here.
And if I may, Chair, what I will do is just have the attachment, Exhibit A, with the action taken and the vote on each item attached to the resolution. I think we've written the resolution in a way that anticipated that you might make some changes. So it wasn't necessarily written to match the staff recommendations. I believe that it was written broadly enough that whatever actions you took would be covered by the resolution. We'll just get specific with the exhibit then.
Okay. So do I hear a motion from the commission regarding approval of the resolution recommending that the city council approve amendments to the interim land use regulations for recreational marijuana businesses and establishing them as non-interim land use regulations?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes. And thank you very much. We are now adjourned.
Thank you.